Five seconds.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Auburn School Committee meeting for October 8th, 2025. This meeting is being conducted in person and is being recorded by the Auburn cable television. All are welcome to join us in person at 5 West Street. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are also available on the town's website, and the public is encouraged to follow along using that posted agenda. Thank you. And if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. Our commitment, we will create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
All right, thank you, Dr. McCrullis. We do have someone here for citizens comments? So, all right. Per school committee policy, B E D H, speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to present their material and must begin their comments by stating their name and town precinct. The public comments section shall not exceed fifteen minutes, and all speakers are encouraged to present their comments in a respectful manner. Topics for discussion should be limited to those items within the school committee's scope of authority, review and approval of the school district budget, the performance of the superintendent, and the policies of the district. So, welcome. Come on up. Yeah, sure, yep.
Hi, my name is Michaela Almeida, and I actually don't know what precinct.
That's fine.
I'm sorry. So, good evening, members of the school committee and community. Recent events in our schools have been weighing heavily on my mind. I've been reflecting lately on what moments like this mean for our students, our teachers, and our shared values. We're living in polarizing times, and emotions are running high, especially when beliefs and values collide. So I want to acknowledge that what motivates and unites us is that we all deeply care about our schools and the education of our children. Thank you to Dr. Chamberlain. I believe that your response last week to a sensitive situation was thoughtful and measured, and I wholeheartedly agree that all students should be able to use their voices in ways that reflect their beliefs. The Tinker decision solidified that decades ago, that neither students nor teachers shed their constitutional rights at the schoolhouse gate. In this situation, it would not be fair to presume what the message of any particular presentation would have been, even knowing the views held by the public figure selected. Personally, I vehemently disagree with those views while also acknowledging an individual's right to hold them. This distinction matters. It means that upholding everyone's right to speak while also ensuring that harmful or exclusionary ideas are challenged in ways that all students are felt feeling safe and respected. Our community, like many others throughout the country, are going through the consequences of what philosopher Karl Popper called the paradox of tolerance. Popper wrote that a truly tolerant society must not tolerate those who promote intolerance. If intolerant ideologies are allowed unchecked expression, they could destroy tolerance itself. This raises complex but important things to consider. So my concern lies in the future potential response. How do we uphold free expression while also protecting students from harm and exclusion? How do we ensure that every student feels both safe and heard? Because of this situation, some in our community may now be unwilling or unable to speak up about injustices that happen. When people fear that speaking up might cost them their jobs or their safety, we all lose something that's essential to education: honest and courageous dialogue. Responding thoughtfully to harmful rhetoric and misinformation helps young people learn what true civil discourse truly looks like, and it shows them through our example what it means to live in a community. As a teacher educator myself, I prepare aspiring teachers to enter the classroom in this complex world. I teach them that their role is not only to impart knowledge into students, but to nurture critical thinking, empathy, and integrity. This is not about promoting one ideology over another. It's about preparing students to engage thoughtfully with difficult issues. At the end of Dr. Chamberlain's email last week, she stated that we're all people trying to do the best we can, which reminded me of a quote from Bishop Desmond Tutu that I recently shared with my own college students, that "all of our humanity is dependent upon recognizing the humanity in all others." Discussions about divisive topics are never easy, but they're necessary. And if we can approach them with humility, empathy, and a shared commitment to truth and justice, our schools and our community will be stronger for it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, any more citizens comments?
I have something to say.
Okay.
Thank you for coming and speaking. I want to take a moment to address the use of social media as the main method of voicing district concerns. This approach has been harmful and has led to some unnecessary confusion within our district. As a member of the Auburn School Committee, my goal is to support our students, families, and staff through open and respectful conversation. I can only do that effectively when people reach out directly with their concerns. When individuals are brought to, when issues are brought to me, I will do my best to listen, provide accurate information, or connect individuals with the right person to help. Posting frustrations on social media or discussing them publicly without all the facts rarely leads to positive change. It often divides our community instead of strengthening it. We all share a common goal: ensuring the success and well-being of the Auburn students. That requires collaboration, understanding, and willingness to talk to one another directly. I encourage anyone with questions or concerns to reach out first to their child's teacher, who knows them best in the school setting, then school leaders, or the school committee when appropriate. Real progress happens when we communicate with respect, honesty, and a shared commitment to our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. All right. Seeing no more citizens comments, we'll move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do, we do have a special recognition this evening, and I'm proud to say that we're recognizing one of our own. This morning, Jessie Harrington, Chair of the School Committee, was awarded the Auburn Youth and Family Services Children's Friend Award. Jessie received this award for her years of ongoing support to AYFS as a board member, a volunteer assisting with fundraisers, adopting families in need, providing Halloween costumes, leading a babysitting class, designing superhero capes for summer program participants, and more. Jessie's been a member of the Auburn School Committee for eleven years, and during this time, she has dedicated herself to ensuring our students and staff receive everything they need to be successful in our schools. In a world that can sometimes be focused on division, Jessie has been a force for good, a force for collaboration, and a force focused on acceptance and inclusion, and she is very deserving of this special award.
Thank you. This is a lovely morning.
It was great, yes. By the recognition, and yeah, it was wonderful. I'm gonna cry again. All right, well, thank you for that. We'll move right on to acceptance of the minutes from eight twenty twenty-five and nine three twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from eight twenty twenty-five and nine three twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we will move on to student rep report, but I don't see them here tonight. Do we know when they're coming, or?
Well, I think this is part of the conversation you're gonna have about the...
Okay, so, this was for the member to sit up here. I'm not sure about, did we have one for...
I think we had talked about potentially combining that position.
Okay.
But we do still have Mr. DeLong Champ.
Yes.
Right? We were gonna follow up with the rep that was here last year.
Yes. And if you would still like to have you join him, he is very happy to join you this year.
So we can have him come?
I would rather have them be separate entities, I think. Yeah, if she's willing.
So we'll invite Eve for the next meeting.
Yeah, that would be great, because it's great to get, you know, the behind the scenes of the high school from someone who's not sitting up here, you know. So, thank you for that. All right, so we are searching. Last year, we had a student, her name was Chloe Young.
She was great.
And she was wonderful, and we missed her. She's now going to Columbia, which is amazing. So, we are now going to fill her seat with someone new. And Meg, you actually headed to the high school to do a meeting, so you wanna talk a little bit about that?
Yep, Mr. DeLong Champ and I met with two very eager juniors, both juniors, who are both willing and open to come meet with us and be part of the entire meeting. So, we have their letters here. They're anonymous, so that when we vote, it won't be based on who it is. So hopefully, we'll be getting that out to them next school committee, probably correct?
Yeah.
And then they'll be told.
Yep, it will be.
Awesome.
So, through the chair, I have three, I have like four things. Can we, can we like number them so we know who we're talking about?
Yes. So there's, oh, one, two, and then one student gave a cover letter and a resume. So there's three students total.
I'm in, okay, so the one that says, "Dear Honorable Members..."
That's number two.
That's number two? So we'll call that number two? And then the one that has the top crossed out?
That's number three.
That'll be number three?
Yeah. And number ones to whom it may concern.
So there's three people?
Yes.
Okay. Right?
Yep.
Okay, so...
So, yeah, take those home and look them over, and then we'll reconvene on this next meeting, and then, yeah, get the ball rolling to fill Chloe's seat. Any questions or comments anymore? All right, we will move on to student spotlight. I'm sorry, the superintendent's report.
Excellent, thank you. So this evening for student spotlight, we do have Kevin Bigelow here, our athletic director, along with Mr. DeLong Champ. Some students who I'll have introduce themselves, but they can come on up to the podium and talk about their athletics and student leadership.
I always get yelled at, and I don't wanna, can you guys hear me with this? Fantastic. So I am, it's good to see you. Good evening. I am very pleased to introduce this great group of student leaders who participate on our, some of our athletic teams, as well as Mr. Bigelow behind me. Our new league that we discussed last year, the Central Mass Athletic Conference, has a focus on leadership and developing student leadership amongst the thirty-three or thirty-four schools. So they were in attendance at a workshop recently, and I am gonna stop talking now and give the floor to Mr. Bigelow.
It's great to be here. Thank you for having us and showing off what our students are up to and doing and accomplishing. You know, I think before I explained the workshop and everything, I think at every step in my career in athletics, the one big takeaway that I've always tried to have my student athletes, you know, instilled in is, you know, the life lessons that come out of competing in a team sport. So, you know, this workshop definitely was in line with that. We were lucky enough, as Mr. DeLong Champ said, with our conference, new conference, Central Mass Athletic Conference, through a grant, we brought in a man named Travis Daughtry. He speaks all over the country, and he has a company called Champions One Oh One. It's a sports performance and leadership development program focused on unique abilities to separate the very best from everyone else in sports and in life. Some of the topics and trainings that Travis offers through Champions One Oh One and the titles are embrace the process, win the battle within, be bold, build your toughness, love each other, build competitive maturity, overcome adversity, and choose your attitude. All great topics. On September tenth, we took a group of six students down to Nittmunk and BBT. The workshop was split between the two schools, and they had breakout sessions from eight-thirty to one PM, ended with lunch at one PM. And those breakout sessions were titled, "Win, Lose Like a Winner," "Being Coachable," and "Be a Great Teammate." So we have three of the student athletes that joined us that day. I'm gonna have them introduce themselves and give you their takeaways from that great workshop.
Hello, my name is Tig Rich. I play football at Auburn High School. And I'd say my biggest takeaway from this workshop was how to mentally be there for your teammates. Sometimes the season can get long mentally, and it takes a wear on your body. And I, the biggest takeaway I got is being there for your teammates, uplifting them when it gets tough, when the season gets long, being there and supporting them through and through.
Hi, I'm Maya Tatum. I play field hockey and ice hockey at the high school. One of my biggest takeaways from the workshop that we did was not only that, like, learning skills of a leader, but also how to be there for your teammates and encourage everybody around you to have a good, like, winning mindset throughout the season and be productive with your teammates.
Hi, I'm Mirabel Silva, and I run track and cross-country at Auburn. And I thought the biggest takeaway I had was, like, learning how to turn an individual sport into a team sport, because cross-country and track can be both very, like, individual as a sport, but it's important to, like, include everyone and make sure you push everyone to be the best, because at the end, it's, we're still a team.
Wasn't that scary, was it? Wasn't that scary?
Do we have any, that was great, by the way. The three of you are natural leaders, which is amazing. It's great. Do we have any questions or comments for them?
Through the chair, was it, you said six kids went?
We took six, yep.
Six kids, yes.
Nice.
Through the chair, all fall sports, kids, or?
Yeah, so I think our plan for the, for the CMAC conference is to do one every season, maybe with a different theme, but, you know, this conference is just getting off the ground. Hopefully, you know, I came from a school that was from the mid-watch, and we did something similar with team building. Sometimes it was leadership, different themes, so hopefully, we have the same thing here in the CMAC.
Through the chair, I think it's great that you're fostering that, like, teamwork and working together, because I think that sometimes that gets lost in translation, and so I think it's important that you're doing that, because, I mean, as someone who played high school sports, sometimes, you know, your teammates weren't always the most encouraging, but it's good to know that you guys are learning that and you can show your peers, and so I hope you enjoyed it. And if you get to go again, try to do it again. It's awesome.
Yeah, I always say, you know, winning and the games and stuff, that's the fun part, but, you know, the takeaways and, you know, these things that these kids learned is really what it's all about.
You always remember what your teammates did or didn't do for you, and so that's important. It's good memories.
Yep, absolutely.
Through the chair, so how do you see this? Have you seen a change in how you're interacting? Like, that's what's your takeaway, but now are you seeing, are you feeling it when you're out there with your teammates?
It's definitely, like, interesting to have the new conference going, because it's definitely, like, I could see a lot of people who are running against, and track's gonna be even bigger, because we're, like, going to different places, like, instead of staying in, because Northbridge and Tannascot is where we only run in indoor track, and now we're gonna be going to Boston, so we'll be seeing even more schools and having more opportunities because of, like, the conference.
Right?
It's great.
Kind of along that same lines, you know, and I'm new here, but I definitely think that, you know, the profile for our student athletes is gonna be a lot higher in the new conference. And at the same time, they're learning a lot more, being out there, you know, and not just at the same schools that they were used to being at.
Some of the biggest changes that I've seen is, speaking on what I said earlier...
Tig, could you just go over to the microphone? I'm getting a sign from behind you to...
So the biggest change that I've seen, speaking on what I said earlier about how the season can get rough mentally, is that sometimes the coaches can get a little harsh on you playing sports. You make a mistake, get a little harsh. And sometimes the biggest change that I've seen is being there when your teammate makes a mistake, letting them know what they did wrong, how to fix it, and next time, you're good. Don't worry about it, forget about it mentally, and that supports how, like, makes you feel better.
Those are great lessons to learn.
Yeah, lessons that I think a lot of us could use in a day-to-day kind of thing, right? But sometimes you gotta move on from a mistake, and it's good to be a good teammate in a lot of ways, so it's great.
Through the chair, can I just ask one question? Was there an opportunity for any of the coaches to go as well, or was it just, just student athletes?
Okay.
I was just curious.
Great.
That's great.
Yeah. Well, if you'd come up and shake our hands, I think, right?
Yeah, yep.
We appreciate you coming, and then you can go on your merry way.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Great job.
We might be that scary.
Thank you very much. Good update.
Thanks, Day.
Bye, thank you.
Welcome back, welcome back.
Have a good night.
Have a great night.
Good night, thank you.
Great. Awesome.
If anyone else needs to leave, feel free. You can, you don't have to stay for the whole thing. You've got wait an agenda, but that's up to everyone here, so.
All right. All right, that was great. So we are going to table the policy updates for tonight?
Yes, I'll have additional information moving forward.
Okay. And I think we're gonna jump down to the food services update.
We are.
Have a great night.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
You do have something in your packet from food services.
I wanna do this.
If it's not snacks, I don't want it.
It's gonna be up on top, too. Yeah, if it's not about snacks, we don't want it. We didn't think about that. Snacks.
If it's not snacks, I don't want it.
Don't ask her, ask me. I say, yes. We ask every time for snacks.
We just like free stuff.
Yes. Okay, duly noted for next time. I got your back. There should never be an ask. You should just bring it.
That's pretty fair.
We're happy to see you.
I do show up to all of our meetings with snacks.
What?
I can try. Okay, I will try to make this worth your while.
There's no snacks, so.
Oh, come on.
Wait for the questions you're gonna get. He'll run the, do you want, because Alan can switch it here.
Sure, whatever you'd like.
The next page.
Okay, great. Thanks for seeing me again. So I wanted to give you an update on the Bryn Mawr kitchen project, some numbers, and just like an overall update for the program, because I only get to see you a couple times of the year, so, whoa.
Sorry.
Okay, so the interior and exterior view of the existing service line wall before removal. Thanks, Glenn, for taking these photos, because I realize that I have next to no photos of Bryn Mawr before the renovation. So, take a good look of what it looks like before, and then now after. Okay, hard work pays off. So this is during construction in July. I just popped in a couple of times to check in, so we've removed in the back corner the existing walk-in. We have a new walk-in refrigerator freezer unit, which the staff love. It's in a new location, which is great. We've removed the service line, and we've removed the brick wall, and there was a lot of electricity that was done, as you can see. Okay, so our newly renovated space. We, I worked with Brooke, the principal at Bryn Mawr. She picked out the service line color. I always ask the principals to pick out the color, because I feel like it's just as much their space as it is mine. I just need it to serve a purpose. The pretty things don't mean so much to me. So as you can see, my staff are really great. There are tons of decorations. They are planning to do something for every season now. The service line is lower for the children to have easier access to putting their food on the tray line, and then they're coming through. Cold food is first, then they're grabbing extras, and their hot food is next. And then they are checking out using their IDs on the other side there. We don't really know how to take a good picture of a bathroom, but there is a bathroom there now. And there is storage space in that space as well. And then we've moved the milk cooler from inside the newly renovated kitchen space to in the hallway just for easier access to the students. What really pushed this project was just updating the space, knowing that this school has a lot of longevity in it. Also, practicality for the students. We have increased three minutes, we've gained since doing the renovation, three minutes.
That's awesome.
I mean, that's huge for me, because at the middle school, in eight minutes, we get two hundred and thirty kids through. At the high school, we're getting about the same in, like, an eight-minute window, so gaining three minutes at an elementary school is huge for them to actually stare at their food before they have to throw it away, because they don't have a lot of time. So, there's that. If we wanna move on to the next slide. So, the cost of the project. I am terrible with numbers, and I know my weaknesses, so it is visually there for you. Please, please, don't make me say it out loud. If you need me to, I will, but it's just not my strong point. So, new food service equipment, just over eighty-one thousand dollars, so that's our walk-in, that's our new tables. It's a new oven and range. It is, what else?
Wine?
To furnish all of the, oh, can we go back one?
Sorry, yeah.
Sorry, that's okay. To furnish the walk-in, to make sure that we have the right shelving, so on and so forth. And then bringing space to code and all of just the other things that I've been working with Glenn on was just over two hundred and forty-four thousand. And then Glenn and I have hopes that we will do a second phase this next summer to do the middle section. So if you're familiar with Bryn Mawr, there were three very distinct sections, and we were able to work with the town to have two sections done this summer, and we did what they like to call a summer slammer. That kind of was a summer/fall slammer this year, but hopefully will be a little bit more put together for this coming summer. We are looking to do the hoods and ansel system, update the three-bay sink, and renovate the ceiling. So it's all the same throughout the entire space. If you get the opportunity to check it out, I'd love your feedback. It's pretty permanent now, so nothing too, nothing too much, okay?
Through the chair, I've seen it, and it...
It's nice, right? It's just so open. When you walk in the door, the front door, I find myself walking through the front door more just to, like, be in awe of it than going through the back door.
Not having to go in and out and with kindergartners.
You have kids going with trays, coming in, a regular-sized door.
So much.
Always precarious, so it's a great change for that school.
And then we're working with staff. We've kind of developed a nice exit strategy, so that back door is still accessible to staff. They just have to exit through the gym door, so they can come through that back hallway to that back door. They can't come through the main kitchen area, because that's just a safety issue. But the staff do have access to that back door. Okay, perfect. May I have my next slide, please? So, the new food service equipment that I'm looking to procure, I am starting the bid process now with hopes to get them back in November, so then we can put in our purchasing for December, because then we can get everything by April break, which is like the goal, is to have everything all in by April break. So at Packachog, we're gonna do a new steamer and a tower garden. At Swanson, we're gonna do a new service line, oven, and steamer. And at Auburn High School, the middle school, I'd like to remove their kettles and replace it with something else. So, I have put the picture of the kettle, just so everybody kind of knows what it is. This one is a propane kettle, the one at the high school's a natural gas kettle. What it is, is it fills up with water, and you get to boil things in it. We just don't have the need for this type of equipment. We have a steamer, which we can cook with much faster. Just waiting for the water to boil, like, just imagine being at home but adding fifty gallons of water. So it's just time-consuming. It's great when you're cooking a couple hundred pounds' worth of pasta, but we batch-cook now, so we're constantly producing product through all of the lunches and before it. So it's just not a useful piece of equipment for us, and it takes up a lot of space. So I would like to eventually remove them. We have the option, because both pieces of equipment have completely depreciated, there's no value left to them, we can have them removed or sell them. So those are our options with those two kettles. But the middle school, we'd like to replace it with heating units, so where we can hold food in, because we don't have a lot of space. The middle school kitchen, for the amount of volume that we're serving, there's just not a lot of space to keep things. At the high school, we're looking into potentially a new combi oven, another combi oven, because their volume has drastically increased, that they could use more cooking space.
So you may have on the next meeting agenda a request to either sell or discard the kettle, but in Brienne's discussions with some folks that come in and out, salespeople, that there are restaurants that might pay, you know, two hundred and fifty or three hundred dollars for the kettles, because they can use them.
The rail-trail flatbread is interested in buying the propane kettle, so that...
So we may look into that. It's just not... So we may look into that, it's just not, it's been there a while, it's just not purposeful anymore, so.
Perfect, um, do you have any questions? Oh, I wanted to show you this tower garden, it is like my pride and joy, I love gardening, um, and I've rubbed off on a couple of my staff, we started all of these seedlings, um, from seeds, three weeks ago at Auburn High School, my staff did it just for funsies, I gave them the seeds and they did it, because I'm having trouble acquiring seedlings, it's just the time of year, um, but the high school staff has taken the initiative to start the seedlings for everybody's tower gardens, so we're gonna have, be able to grow product through the winter this year.
That's awesome.
Which is great, yeah, it's like one of my favorite things, but yes, um, shout-out to Auburn High School staff for starting the seedlings. Okay, my next slide, please. Um, okay, so harvest of the month, uh, I have created a menu for the harvest of the month for the entire year, and it lives on our website, I've also linked, uh, the recipes that we are going to be using, um, it's something that I am trying to do better, um, posting things and bragging about the program, everybody just does a good job, and I'm happy with it all the time that I forget to brag. Um, so just so you know, that we are participating in harvest of the month, every month, it's the, um, Massachusetts Department of Agriculture puts it out, and they give us lists of what it is for each month, this month is pear, so you'll see pear crisp, pear salad, you'll see bosque, bartlett, um, all different types of pears, uh, fresh, frozen, canned, the, all of it. Um, I am going to be applying for a farm-to-school grant, the due date is for, um, twelve-five, I am hopeful to get some funding, the ideas that I was thinking about, and I've been working with Maria over at Auburn High School, is to do field trips to farms for kids, that's what I'd like to do, I'd like to, um, and also to go to distribution centers, um, because I think it's a really cool concept to know where your food comes from, from like, yes, we understand it comes from the ground, but it has to be processed, and how is it stored, and how does it get to you, and then how do we get it, to kind of close that gap, um, but one of the things that we've really talked about is doing field trips. Food shows, we're doing food shows grade three through twelve, they've taken off at the high school level, we've done them the three years that I've been here, um, but now we're gonna branch into Swanson and Auburn Middle School, Auburn Middle School will have theirs in November, um, Swanson will have theirs in January, and then the high school always rounds us out in February, it just kind of works out really great for them. So we'll have different vendors at each food show, and then that is how I am planning on engaging the students with what we should be buying for next year, so I buy all of my food and procure it all in March for September, so, um, I am trying to gather all this information by the end of February. Um, National School Lunch Week, this will be the first time that I've officially participated in the whole week, um, so this year's theme is Passport to Your Lunchroom, and we are going to be highlighting recipes, um, that are German, Asian, Greek, Turkish, French, Caribbean, um, so if you look at our menus online, they are broken down, um, what's gonna be served each day, we bought decorations for the cafeteria, uh, and we worked with Auburn Middle School's International Club to get all of the recipes, so the club came up with a very extensive recipe book, um, that we are using to, um, make all the meals this week, so every day you'll see a scratch-based meal, um, the staff are a little like, why are you doing this to me? But I hope that the kids are really going to enjoy it, um, I'm very excited for it. Um, and then National School Breakfast Week is the first week of March, and it's the Quest to Your Breakfast, um, so it's like medieval-themed, and we're gonna try and figure out some fun breakfast things. Um, so I have some pictures on the bottom here, uh, the ones to the left are, uh, we participated in the open house at Auburn Middle School, um, the staff wanted to reach out to the parents, and I'm so happy, because they planned this themselves, I was just there for moral support, um, so we set up the service line as we would for breakfast and for lunch, and showed different trays that we had served that particular week to the parents, to give them a really good idea of what we have to offer, and to do some education on what the students are able to take if they so chose, so they could take a cup of fruit, a cup of vegetables, their main entree, a milk, so they're usually just going by us with just the bare minimum, and we wanted to target the parents to show them, hey, it's a free meal, can you pick it up? Um, and we worked with some of the parents that have athletes, and what shelf-stable food they can utilize in the lunch line, that they can store in their backpacks or their lockers, to have during, um, athletic time. Um, and then the pizzas, they're so cute, I am so happy when they send me pictures of their food, um, and then just a, a picture of some chicken tenders, um, that everybody loves. Um, I don't know if I have anything else, oh, I do, may I have my next slide? Okay, so meals served, uh, oh, it's empty, that's a bummer, they didn't save, but anyway, um, we are serving, uh, a hundred and sixty-eight more lunches than last year, and they are all at the high school. Um, we are serving almost six hundred and fifty children at the high school, um, and that's like our biggest participating school as of right now. Um, we are currently seven hundred and ten breakfasts under our average from last year, but October is still young, so it's just, the first couple of months of school, parents really enjoy catering to their children's needs when they're leaving, um, and then they're gonna get tired, and they're gonna come and find you.
I feel personally attacked.
Speaking from experience, I don't need to target anybody. Um, but yes, so, um, there were numbers, I will share them with you if you would like, uh, on a future date.
Can you come back like every meeting?
Sure.
Participation is way up, and then she's done a great job.
Yeah, that's amazing.
It's gonna be a new thing, I'm gonna look and find you snacks, I'll acquire something out of the share bin.
On the share, I don't want the share bin! So we're getting apples.
Okay, can I help you with anything else? Is there anything else you wanna know?
I think the one other thing was the vendors, right? So your vendors aren't, yeah.
Um, so we are part of the Massy Buying Group, um, it is similar to the French River Collaborative, um, and we have our vendor contracts for this year, we have not entered a new contract with a new vendor, every vendor that we have, we've had previously, um, but I do have agreements here, if you would like to peruse them, they are the templates from the buying collaborative. So I have these, um.
Yeah, there is no change, um, but what she does need is a vote for all of you to say that she can continue with the vendors that she's used previously, because there is no one new.
Okay. So is everyone, if we, if I entertain a motion, are we okay with, yeah, alright, um, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the vendors to be utilized by the Food Service Department?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
There you go, you can keep.
Even though you feel personally.
Oh, I didn't have it.
I didn't pretend.
Um, we appreciate it, and I can't think of anything else.
I think we are good, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
I will say through the chair, I have.
You too, yes.
I can't believe the high school members are high.
That's always been like the.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah.
Awesome.
It's giving the middle school, uh, manager a run for her money, because they're calling each other, how many breakfasts did you serve? How many lunch did you serve? Because she feels attacked, because she used to be the highest.
Oh, my word, that's so funny.
Through the chair, I will say I have tried her pear crisp, and it is very good.
Oh, man.
And I'm not a pear person, but it is.
It is good.
Great. Awesome, thank you so much.
It was wonderful.
So now we're gonna do parking lot.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so next up, we are going to, um, discuss the Swiss parking lot update.
We're going a little out of order, because I have, um, Mr. Greg Wa here, so I don't wanna keep him, um, too late into the evening, um, so, a couple of meetings ago, I spoke with you about, uh, the Swiss parking lot, um, which had some sinkholes that had to be corrected, uh, and so we began the process of doing so, and at the time, we were encouraged that that was just going to be the section that needed to be fixed. Well, like many construction issues, if you can go to the next slide, um, once they opened up the section that they planned to work on, they took some pictures, and you jump in if I'm saying anything that I shouldn't be saying, Glenn, um, but you'll see, this one is a little bit difficult, if you go down one more, this is looking inside, so to the left, you can see where this is supposed to be, a chamber, and there are rocks coming through the wall. I'm not an expert, but that's not good.
The rocks through the chair are not supposed to be at the bottom.
The rocks are supposed to be on the bo- well, yeah, below it, no, but see over to the left on the, that shouldn't be coming, the wall should be a solid wall.
Gotcha.
If we go to the next picture, um, there are some, there were additional holes, or too many holes that were cut up in the top, right, as far as viewing holes.
The top of all of the columns have punch holes in them, which allow the, uh, designer to pick its, a spot where they wanna be able to view at any time, to see if everything below is okay. Uh, within the process of design, there should have only been four holes, and there would have been a, a steel cap at the top that you open up and you can look down in, when we literally put a camera on a little Jeep and slid it down thirty feet and took pictures of it, we found that the contractor punched inadvertently the holes through many of the, the punch-out knockouts, which really shouldn't have been done, um, as part of their process in construction, it was in, probably oversight after the, everything was, was moving on, labor goes out and starts punching holes, and realized there was only a predetermined amount that should have been done.
So if we can go to the next picture, this is another place where the sidewall of the, of the, um, the chamber has been compromised by the stones that were to the side, which again, it, 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 um, addresses the integrity of the whole chamber itself, and I think we have one more.
Hence why there is a sinkhole.
Hence why there's a sinkhole, and now if you can barely see, right at the beginning, on the right-hand side, it looks like a hairline, like, okay, so those are cracks, which are hard to see here, but they kind of run down the whole side, so those are hairline cracks now, that have formed along the edge of the entire chamber, yeah. Um, and so, you know, the news is not good, what we did was, um, you know, Glenn's been great working with Graves Engineering and figuring all this out, but we also ran all this by Joanna Paquelin, who is the DPW Director here in town, um, and she didn't look at it for two minutes, and she said, you have to replace the whole system. So if we now go to the next slide.
Can you move it, advance it, Glenn, up there? Just with the arrow.
Just with the arrow?
No, without my glasses, no. Can't see the arrow.
I don't know why that was working before.
Alright, where are we going on this one?
Arrow down? No, just with the arrow buttons, not with the mouse.
Oh, sorry, here we go.
No, okay.
There we.
The other way.
It just wants to end there.
Okay, well, you have it in your packet, you'll see the last sheet, um, so the initial quote for the first section was a hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, to do this additional work is going to be an additional hundred and fifty-five thousand four hundred dollars, for a total of two hundred and eighty-eight, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Um, I am very appreciative of the support and guidance that Jen and I have been getting from, uh, Dory Vecchio, Town Manager, and Karen Harnoyce, um, the, uh, financial, uh, person there of accounting, and what they, in looking at what was available, we were looking at options through CIP, and you had approved, uh, a warrant article a couple of meetings ago, to use some HVAC money from Swanson Road as part of this initial hundred and thirty-two, um, in what they have discovered, and we were not aware of it, but there are remaining funds from the middle school building project back in twenty-thirteen, that was approved back in twenty-thirteen, which at the bottom of this, you'll see, the AM, AMS school project, two hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. Um, the town has shared with us that they believe that that would be the best money to use for this project, because number one, the money is old and has been sitting there for, we honestly can't even see it in our system, this was something that we weren't aware was still remaining, the town knew it was there, we did not know it was there. Um, and so they have said now, the best course of action is to finish and use that up as part of a school system project, and then only use thirty-four thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars out of the Swanson Road HVAC. Um, so it's less of a hit to the other CIP projects, it cleans up some money from years ago, um, and that will result in giving us about three hundred thousand dollars, we believe the two eighty-eight, three ninety-nine is a fairly solid number, but as you know, that with any construction, there's always some flexibility, right, with what it could end up costing, so it gives us a little bit of flexibility with that. Um, so does anybody have any questions about all of that at this point?
I think my question is just the timeline of when this is, what's like.
So this is dicey, for sure, it's tricky, right? So, um, we had initially started, um, because in the, with that first project for the one thirty-two, if we had gotten bills in before we get to town meeting, the town had assured us that if we had a revolving account to fall back on, which we do with Swanson Satellite and Galaxy, to pay any bills that we needed to, then we could start the work and then go to town meeting. I'm still working with the town at this point, to see if we can proceed right now, because what we're going to run into is weather, and so it's gonna get to the point that we can't pave if we don't start soon. Um, so Mrs. Vecchio is gonna be working with her board to see if we can now proceed. So what we'll need from you tonight is to vote to approve this change in the warrant article, which is also in your packet, and I'll continue to work with, um, Mrs. Vecchio to see if we can move forward with this project, even though this has not been approved by town meeting yet, and the reason for this is, it's an emergency, quite frankly, because if we don't get this done, and we had to cover this instead of paving it with stone, we now run into plowing issues and ice issues, and all those issues through the winter, right, because you're not gonna be able to effectively plow if it's now covered in stone instead of pavement, because the project ran too late, and we couldn't pave anymore, right? Can't pave come, what, what did you say, Glenn? Usually by.
It's kinda, it's a flexible thing, generally somewhere around November fifteenth into December, uh, the plant itself shuts down, as frost gets into the ground, you can't put asphalt over them, there's a little bit of cushion there, but those are the general guidelines, November fifteenth to somewhere early in December where the plant itself shuts down, and we can't get the product we need.
So there is some urgency, because our option for parking, as you know, right now we're using part of the kickball field, or there's the field at Bryn Mawr, neither which are good solutions, again, once we get weather, right? Because you can't really plow the field either, to make sure that folks are safe when they're parking. Um, the other issue with moving forward with this quickly and getting it done this year is a liability issue, um, because if we don't, we did have conversations, like, could we wait to do the second part of things, wait for a year or two? There's a chance we could, there's also a chance we could have a problem, right? That another sinkhole quickly develops, and somebody's car gets stuck in it, or somebody gets hurt by it, or, um, now that we know that these issues are present, we need to move forward quickly, so we are working to see how quickly we can get it going, um, but it's, it's gonna be tight, so I'm still working with the town on that.
Through the chair, do we have to make it larger than it already is right now? And.
In the same lot, though.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, yeah.
And then in the, I know last meeting we talked about like insurance, is this something we can submit to insurance?
So we're still, we, we're not encouraged, but it's not hopeless yet, um, they have turned this whole claim over to the property division, um, and we are exploring some options as to how this happened in the first place, so whether that's insurance or there's some liability, now insurance has said, you know, we're ten years out from when this work is done, so is there a chance we can go back if something wasn't done properly? Maybe, but we're, we are still exploring all those options, for sure.
Through the chair, we'll need a motion to accept the, um, warrant article amendment, as well as the CIP amendment as well.
Right, because the initial CIP was taking out ninety, no, no, not ninety-eight, a hundred and fifty thousand from Swanson Road HVAC, we no longer need to do that, this would only take thirty-four thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars out of the Swanson Road HVAC.
So do you just want this motion read? Is that what?
I don't know, that's only one of them. I just need to, um, so before, we have brought the school department warrant articles to you, so I just need you to entertain a motion to approve the amendment to the school department warrant?
As presented.
As presented by the superintendent or business manager.
Do we have any more discussion before?
I just had one.
Yes.
Just a small one, just to make sure that I'm understanding, so the Swanson Road, we've already approved, we're just gonna take a little bit of that, because this is urgent, but it's not gonna affect the air quality project.
Yeah, so the last, the initial article that you approved was taking the full hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of CIP for HVAC, now, which, which was, we were gonna help with some of that through the town ARPA funding, but now we're not gonna, we're only gonna take thirty-four thousand dollars of it, so it's a much better scenario, quite frankly, as far as impacting CIP related to Swanson, current things, right? And we're gonna. And we're going to use up, which the town select board has been asking us to make sure that we're not keeping CIP money for years and years and years, right? So there had been some older things, and this isn't just us, it's other departments in the town, that had put in for CIP, let's say for three or four years ago, but hadn't done the project yet. They want to keep us somewhat more current. So using up that middle school money helps in that regard.
Okay. But the air qual- like, the air quality is fine then, right? At Swiss.
Correct, correct, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
With you, we're here, I'm ready.
I know, it's, we were trying to write this, it was confusing us today too, but we got through it, so. And you'll see, so the first page is the article itself, and this will have to be presented on town meeting floor by either myself or the moderator. They haven't determined yet who will do that because it is a change as, because the warrant itself was already printed, right? So this will be an amendment, and so the second page is an explanation of the change to town meeting members, because that's being sent out very soon, we have to get this to the town by tomorrow. And then the third page is just the revised, that we're only using thirty-four thousand of that one fifty for the parking lot repair.
Sounds urgent, so.
Through the chair, I'm just happy the, the pictures look kind of cool at least.
Through the chair.
We have had some students doing some writing assignments.
They signed it.
Oh, there you go!
Loved it, yeah.
They've been working, and actually, I think-
I'm going to speak with them, I'm going to go into their classroom.
Yes.
I gave them the actual plans today so they could review the actual square footage of what the project started out to be anyway. See how close they were on determining what it was just by viewing. It's been, I've had a lot of conversations with Susan Ada, but it's, it's nice to see them that engaged in what's going on out there.
It's good.
It's a good STEM, STEM project, you know?
Yeah.
Loved it, yeah.
Through the chair, I just convinced a couple kids that there is a pool going in at Swanson Road, just so you know, so I started that rumor.
We're going Olympic.
Yeah, we're going Olympic. One of the, um, one of the crossing guards complained that it is not Olympic size, and I said, "Don't worry, we're going to work on that."
Yeah.
So there we go, we'll be Olympic sized starting next.
Chair, my son says it should be an Olympic size.
Um, all right, well, let's get the ball rolling on this then. Um, as for that motion, I'm completely confused and not sure, so I guess-
Can you repeat that?
Yeah.
I would just ask that somebody entertain a motion to approve the amended school department warrant article.
As presented.
As presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then you needed another one?
Yes.
Yes, I need to, uh, to make a motion to approve the CIP amended plan for FY twenty-two as presented.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
All right, and this is ready to go, right? Everyone's lined up, the workers, everyone?
We need final confirmation, uh, that says yes, we're all set for the funds. If we, we get the verbal that we need and that'll come through, uh, the town, then we can proceed with them. They did a little cleanup work on the site today. Financially, we're in good shape, we do have an existing account to pay the first AIA bill, which I think will come in sometime this week for around thirty thousand. Our next invoice for the project, they invoice monthly, so we won't see it until probably somewhere around November tenth, I know Jen's smiling at that one. So I, I think we're going to be okay, and they, they do want to get moving on this very quickly because we've kind of interrupted their schedule and they have three major pieces of equipment on our property, which is costly to them to move. So as soon as we get the green light to go, they'll be in there, uh, pulling it all up and, and, uh, they can, they can start on what's been excavated immediately. Uh, we will now work, uh, north to south as opposed to going south to north. They just need us to say, "Yes, we're going to do this," so they can pick a start, starting point to go, so. They're, they're, they're ready to go as soon as we give them the green light. I was a little nervous this morning when the, that call said, "Hey, they're working."
Why is that excavator moving?
Yeah, halt happening, we need approval first.
Through the chair, still, we're planning, if all goes well, it'll, the parking lot will be available this winter.
Yes.
Plowable.
Plowable.
That's, you know, they, they extended forty-five days into the work scope of the project, which puts the timeline pretty tight. I think it's more than what they need. Um, I, everything was, all the material that went into the hole was put in there correctly, that, that's all that was supposed to be in the hole. So excavation's been smooth, there's been no large boulders to, to say there's a problem. The only issue that we have is the, the size of the lot and the fencing that's there, there's not a lot of room for the move around. That was the escalation in cost, even though it's only fifty cent more of the system, they have to truck the material around in order to take the material out, bring the material in, it's a little more work from on that side. Um, but we feel comfortable if everything goes on schedule and we get a, a green light next week, I think we'll be fine.
Great, and I think the more updates we can give the kids, the cooler this whole thing will be, so.
A little fifth grader's-
I wanted to run the excavator myself.
He's going to go on a speaking tour.
Pretty sure my kid wanted to jump out of my car, pick up and be like, "I want to, I want to get in the big mound of dirt." I'm like, "No, no, no."
Thank you, Glenn, we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thanks for coming.
For staying so late. Through the chair, through the chair, I drove by that today and I went, "That looks a lot bigger than what they had explained to me."
Growing problem, literally.
And then Sam said, "Pool," and I went, "Oh, that makes sense then, there we go."
I'm spreading that rumor.
Um, all right. Now, back up to the top, I think, the cell phone.
Policy, okay.
Okay, so in your packet, you're going to find surveys for students, families and staff regarding the trial put into place this school year regarding, um, to restrict the use of cell phones during the school day. Um, this was part of what we had discussed last year, that we would survey all of these folks to see how things were going. So the survey is in your packet, I don't know if anyone has any questions about any of it or anything they'd like changed. Um, but as soon as we get a good to go, uh, we'll send these out to, to everyone.
I think, oh, I'm sorry, can you just give a brief update of how it's going so far?
Sure. Um, so at the high school, uh, there was a lot of concern that it was going to be a huge management problem to kind of keep up with it. They were anticipating lots of issues. Um, at this point, some days they might have three incidents, sometimes it might be six or seven, which is very manageable and much less than I had thought. They're still working on watches, um, because that's a little bit harder to gauge sometimes. If somebody has, oh, the right kind of shirt on, you wouldn't even know they had one on and we're obviously not going to start, you know, pull up your sleeves kind of thing. We're not, not going that route. As long as kids are engaged in class and not, you know, and they're doing their thing, then I think that was the intent of the whole policy, right? To increase their engagement. Um, so at the high school, again, and even, um, Mr. DeLongchamp has not fielded complaints from families, complaints from students. Once in a while it'll be like, "Oh, man," but it's compliance and everybody's been really doing well with it. I've spoken with several teachers, they said it has not been a big lift for them, so it's not like they have to be on top of kids all the time, they just don't see the phones. Um, so that's gone well, and we've had several students pay extra visits to the library, checking out books to read during lunch.
Wow, that's great.
And the noise level in the cafeteria is exponentially higher because kids are talking to one another, I think that's a good thing.
And they're eating.
And they're eating. At the middle school, I think likewise, I think at the beginning we had talked about it, right? Kids getting used to the lockers and that kind of thing. Um, it's not as big of a change for the middle school as it was for the high school, um, because they had to have them away anyway. Um, but I've not heard anything, and so we will see what folks think once we do this, but, um, really, and I, it's a testament to our kids and our families, I think that it's gone as well as it has. Um, and we did get a lot of communication out, which I think also helped. Um, but yeah, really, a lot better than I had anticipated. I thought that first month of school was going to be rough, um, but it's, it's been relatively smooth.
Through the chair, the only thing I would ask is that we survey the middle school students on their locker use. Um, I just, unless I missed it, I just don't-
No, you're right, yep.
Um, on if they have enough time at their lockers, if they're, if that's going, I don't know how to word that, is, you know, if they, if they forget something, are they allowed to go back, so, those kinds of things. Make sure that the locker piece is also going okay.
I think through the chairs with anything, like, I heard some grumblings from my daughter and her friends about like locker use at the beginning of the year, and I just kind of giggle, I just kind of giggle because it's always like that. Like the first, you know, unless you do lockers like every single year, you know, the kids struggle and, so I know my daughter was like, "I couldn't get in my locker and I was late to class." I'm like, "It's so normal, like, it's so normal." So I think doing it like now is better when the kids have had more of a chance to get used to it, rather than like the first month of school, because the first month of school lockers are disastrous anywhere.
And I think too, what we tried to do, and I did, um, I didn't come up with these questions myself, I put them, I put a bunch of questions together and I shared it with the folks that had been on the cell phone policy, you know, the cell phone committee some time ago. The one thing that they all wanted to make sure was that we had an open response at the end. You know, if you could change something, what would it be? So that there is something, if we've missed something and didn't ask it, that there's a place for somebody to share. But certainly I can add a couple of questions about the locker at the middle school. Yep, easy, yep.
Great. Awesome, all right, any more questions or?
Do you think that, so, I'm sorry to interrupt-
No, that's all right.
Madam Chair, um, those questions, so what we did on these surveys is the questions, as you can tell, are very similar from one survey to the next, right? So that we can kind of have a comparison. So I would think that those, um, questions should be on the parents and the staff surveys as well regarding the lockers, like-
Yeah, have you heard it?
To say to the staff, you know, "Do you notice that kids are late for class?" Because they have, you know, a variation on it for each, each party, right?
Have you heard your child, like, talk about going to their locker or something like that?
Whatever, yeah, okay, okay. No problem. That's a good catch. Okay, so do we want to wait, I can come back at the next one with a revised survey, or do we want to approve tonight?
I trust you to put some locker-
I believe that you can do it.
I think so too. So, uh, I'll entertain the motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve the cell phone surveys for students, families and staff as presented by the superintendent with the addition of a question about lockers.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a vote.
Through the chair, kids will have an opportunity to do them at school, so we get higher, higher numbers.
Oh, absolutely, oh, absolutely, that's the easiest way to do it, yep, yep.
Great.
All right, where are we at now?
We are at October first enrollment, I think. Uh, as we do each year at this time, uh, this is when we file with DESI, our official, official enrollment, so this is really for information only, um, to share with you where we're at, uh, enrollment wise for this school year at this time. Um, you'll see things, uh, continue to trend down, uh, and again, uh, I don't have a great answer for that, but it is across the state that enrollment is down. So more to come, we'll continue to monitor through the school year. I think at this point we have about, maybe, what was it, twenty-three up at, um?
Yes, it's actually increased, so we're at twenty-six now.
Twenty-six. Um, oh, for the topograph, that's the hardest name to remember, that's the development off of Albert Street. Um, and again, that was a development that went, in the process of development, they said we could expect about sixty-nine students based on what they know, and we're at twenty-six. So, um, we continue to monitor that, uh, and, and update as accordingly to make sure that we're, we know where we're at.
I'm sorry, what was the increase, what was it before? Mandy, that number, the first number, twenty-three?
Okay, yeah, because we talked about it just the other day, so this must, we just must have gotten three new students.
Okay, all right.
Because the other day it was twenty-three, so now up to twenty-six. Uh, and again, expected of sixty-nine is what they had anticipated, so.
Well, and it's hard because, um, I mean, I don't know how the leases run there, because they are all leases, so, you know, someone could leave their lease early or whatever. So it's kind of a fluid number, I guess.
And there's a variety of size units, um, a lot of small ones, I don't think as many of the two-bedroom and three-bedroom, those are a few which you typically see in developments like that. So some are one-bedroom, so, you know, those, I don't, won't impact us, I don't think student-wise.
Okay.
Through the chair, how are the buses, are they crowded or?
We've gotten no complaints, we've, we've met with, um, I won't say we've got no complaints, we do have some issues with the buses, so let me qualify that.
We always do.
But as far as the number of kids on them, I think we're in very good shape.
Excellent.
Um, we did a lot of monitoring with the, um, the regular buses, uh, collecting, you know, having drivers count how many kids are on the bus, and, uh, we don't have any that are over capacity or that we're questioning at this point. You know, it's difficult, we, you're always going to have issues those first couple of weeks of school, there's no way to get around it, right? Kids get on the wrong bus or they take the bus and then they don't want to take the bus, and you have to let everything shake out. We are still working on special education to make sure that those buses are getting to places on time. They did do an adjustment this week with two of the buses, starting them five or ten minutes earlier, so I think that's going to alleviate some of that.
All right, great. Okay, anything else? Anyone? All right, we'll move on.
Uh, the next item, as you can imagine, and I already see an error, which is probably mine, it should say the FY twenty-seven budget timeline, um, because we are planning for FY twenty-seven.
Mine says twenty-seven.
Oh, right here?
Oh, no, yeah, I see it.
On the agenda?
Oh, yeah. The rest, everything else-
Everything else does, except for the very title, so, um, you know, obviously we won't go through all this, um, but today is the day that we're presenting the timeline to you. Um, Mrs. Stanek and I will be working then to share with the leadership team and getting them, we've already actually sent out a staff listing to everyone to like double, double, triple check that we have all of our staff that are here in the budget. Um, and then, um, we'll have that back by the thirteenth, we'll review with each of the principals what they've turned in, and then, um, the budget will be actually prepared and, and looked at. As I noted at a previous meeting, the town is always already saying that it's going to be a very tight budget year. Um, but I will say the one thing we have working in our favor are the number of retirements that we have, um, which will always help, because typically people are retiring at a very high salary and we're hiring at a much lower, so that should help our budget, uh, overall. So I don't know if anyone has any questions about any of this?
Um, so November nineteenth, I cannot make that meeting. Um, would that be anything that we would be voting on that night or concerning the budget? Okay.
No, so that would be submitted to you so that you have time to review it.
Okay, so I can pick that whatever.
And then we have the presentations, um, and somewhere in there, the town has their kickoff meeting when we've already kicked things off.
Yeah.
Um, and then we have another time for questions, and then the vote is not until January.
Okay, all right.
So I can pick up that information? Yep, yep, that'll just be for your review.
Okay.
I tried to build in a, uh, like a two-week ahead because it, it is a daunting document, so if you want to take some time to look at it, you need the time.
Yeah, thank you. All right, great. Anything else from the committee, we're good? All right, moving right along.
Uh, the next item, updating the query form to include a SORI check. So, um, this came to us from Randy McCarthy, this is something that, uh, districts are moving toward. As you know, we query check everyone, we also, all employees have to go and have their fingerprints done, which bring up, you know, can, um, search a criminal record for, um, really everything. Um, but what their, uh, DESI and other districts are moving to is also including the electronic sex offender registry, um, with a review. And how this works is that what we would do is on the, we have a query form on one side and what they call it a SORI on the other side. If you're a new employee or a, um, volunteer, you fill out both and we run that through, um, the system. We would, we would also do, I didn't know what that was, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be distracted. Um, but we would also do this for current employees and they recommend, Mandy's going to be going to a training very soon. Uh, I believe most districts then do it on employees every year. And what's different from this, I think, from a query is you can upload a batch. So as long as you have a spreadsheet with everybody's name and, um, birthday, we can upload it all in one batch, so it won't be a huge lift for, on Mandy's part, like, you don't have to put in every single person individually.
Oh, good.
Um, but it is something that, you know, people's, uh, backgrounds can change once they're with us, and right? We only do a query every three years, so this will be another check to make sure that the folks working with and volunteering with our kids are, um, folks that should be doing that.
Awesome, I think it's a great move. Um, so we need a motion to.
Question?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, through the chair, are we now included in on that too? Being school committee members?
Only if you go in the school.
Right, but like, so you are different. We are here, but we are servicing the school, we are with the student spotlight, we are around the children doing whatever, fundraisers.
We do a query check on you?
We had to do it when I signed up all the, like, for the town, and it's every three years.
Yep, so I would say yes, I would say yes, you'll be on the list.
Okay, it doesn't, I mean-
Through the chair, like, I didn't do a query, I only did a query because I wanted to go on a field trip, so.
Well, that was, that's what I was asking.
I had to do it with Deb, I think her name was Deb, at the town hall.
Oh, when you got sworn in?
Remember that?
Yeah, I had to find, I had to sign all this stuff, I was like, I was like, "Oh, you need my license?" "Oh, Jesus, I didn't think that was a-"
I don't remember that, but, I mean, it might have been, yeah. I mean, I don't have a problem doing it.
You know what, I don't think it's a bad idea, right?
I don't-
I don't think it's a bad idea.
Yeah, I don't have a problem doing it, I would have, like, if that's something that we want to put our names on, it's fine with me.
I just want to, you know, we got it, got it covered all.
Yeah, we also are in camera here, so it's not like-
All right, so, um-
I'll make a motion to include the SORI check in the hiring process for all employees, and do you want me to put an update to yearly or not yet?
I think it's automatic, isn't it?
I think, I think, I think that's part of the processes that you do yearly, but you know what you could add? For all employees and volunteers.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to include a SORI check in the hiring process for all employees and volunteers.
I'll second.
Through the chair, quickly.
Hold on, let's vote.
I have a question about the motion, though.
Oh, yeah.
So it's only saying for the hiring process. Like, what happens to those people that are currently working in the district?
Well, and Mandy's going to go to the training, but I think that's, that's inherent in that, is that once, that, then you go back and you do every, you do everyone every year.
Okay.
Just like a query, like once you do it, then you have to do it every three years.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, well, the motion's fine, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item has to do with our residency affidavit form. So the affidavit form that's in your packet is something that's been in place for some time. So if someone moves into Auburn and they move in with someone and they're not paying rent, the person that owns or leases the property into which they moved has to complete the affidavit form and have it signed. And they provide us with their residency paperwork. So they would give us a copy of their mortgage and their electric bill, or the lease and their electric bill, whatever it is. So that we're verifying that these people are indeed living with someone who is a resident. The change to this fee is at the bottom of the box at the top, where it says, this form must be notarized at the Auburn Town Hall prior to submission. The form has always had to be notarized, we're changing this to have them go to the town hall. First of all, it's free. If you go to a bank or some other places, sometimes they'll charge you $5 or $10 to have the notary done. But this also helps us with allowing the town, because they, whenever they notarize, they make sure that they're notarizing for a resident. So it's going to help us as another check on residency of the folks that are involved. Genjibuto at Town Hall has helped us with three tricky situations this year. Allowing us to make sure that folks were either residents, or no, indeed, they were not residents, which helps us with our enrollment and all of that. So I would ask that the committee allow us to make this change. It does help us in a multitude of ways to ask folks to go there, and that's why we included the hours that they're available. And which, as you can see, they do have evening hours on Mondays, which I think is helpful to some folks. So, you know, sometimes you can only get to the bank during the day with a notary too, so.
Through the chair, are we going to re-get affidavits on students who have already started, or will this just be like moving forward?
No, this is just moving forward, because we do have affidavits on kids that are already here. This, that's the only thing changing, we've been using this for some time. The only thing changing is that we're going to ask for it to be notarized at the town hall versus wherever they want to go.
Awesome.
And they're going to do the dirty work of verifying everything, right?
Yeah.
So it's a win-win. All right, and I do need a motion for that.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes, of course.
Sorry. You put the hours on there, that's great, can you put the address too?
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry. I'm the adoptive eye person, I don't mean to, but I mean, they should know where it is.
Well, if they're new to town, though.
But if you're new, like, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
No, that's great.
That's great.
Certainly, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome stuff. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated residence, residency affidavit form as presented with the addition of Auburn Town Hall's address.
I will second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good vote.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
You get lazy, just throw it in your GPS, you know? You get lazy.
We're going to move on to teaching and learning report.
All right, I feel like I should definitely have asked Breann for some snacks, given the, the time that we're at and if we're going to be talking about MCAS. But so, MCAS results statewide were released on September 29th. We had the opportunity as district administrators and educators to take part in a webinar from the Department of Education and learn a little bit more about statewide results. And I said this last year at this time, but I have a quote in here that I think is important, that we think about MCAS as a photo in the album of our students. It's not the end-all, be-all. We have a, you know, ideally, we look at our students as a full portfolio. Nonetheless, MCAS does provide some useful, beneficial information about students, classrooms, and schools, and how we're progressing. So I'm going to start with what the results were statewide. The next slide, we'll talk a little bit about some of the things that were said in that webinar and that have been reported in the news. So they used the word sobering, and a lot of this stuff is somewhat sobering. We are moving forward, getting back to pre-pandemic levels, but we are not, we are definitely not moving at the pace that we had hoped or thought that we would be. So again, these are statewide results, but, so if you look at grades three through eight compared to last year, compared to 2024, we saw a three percentage point increase in ELA, and again, that's grades three through eight. No change in math, no change in grade five science, and actually, in grade eight, there was an overall two percentage point decrease. Grade 10, which is a whole other ball of wax because of the ballot question, but grade 10 compared to 2024 saw a six percentage point decrease in ELA, a three percentage point decrease in math, and a three percentage point decrease in science. So the next slide gets into some of the things that were shared with us from, from the state level. I used the word sobering already. They certainly were hoping for better results as a result of the work that we've been doing at the, at the state level. Not one single statewide student group has returned to pre-pandemic levels of achievement. There are other states in the country that have gone back to that level, but they are nowhere near the levels of achievement that we have here in Massachusetts. And so that's important to keep in mind as well. 10th grade results, as I just mentioned on the previous slide, were down across the board. And they certainly believe that that is a impact from the question two ballot initiative from last year. And, you know, some people asked about, how do you know that? Well, there were a lot of grade 10 MCAS tests where students, there was no answer, or the answer was just completely off-topic and compared to previous years. I will tell you here, in conversations with principals, we did have a decent amount of opt-outs, students, parents who requested that their child not take the MCAS. So we had several at Swiss, several at the middle school. At the high school, Mr. Longchamp said there were no formal requests for opt-outs, but there definitely were. He said a, a number of students, it was noted last year when they were taking it, that were done within, within about 15 minutes, so. So that's the, you know, 10,000-foot view at the state level.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
And just so folks know, there is not an option to opt-out.
Yeah, thank you.
So the kids get a zero. So we can't say to DESI, these kids opted out, they're not taking it, don't count them, they still get counted, they just get a zero. So if the parent says they want, they, we probably shouldn't call her an opt-out, it's because it's not an option. So I just wanted to clarify that, so.
So that's going to bring our scores down?
It does, yeah.
Correct, because then the child's score is counted as a zero, so I'm sorry to interrupt.
Through the chair, that's at all levels, so like, third grade parent signs their child out, the child gets a zero.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Yeah, that's a really important point, thank you, Dr. Chamberlain. Okay, so just a couple of quick things, a little MCAS review. Each student gets two scores, and by the way, parent reports are going to be mailed out. In the US Mail, there was some conversation at the state level about having a, a portal for families to log into. We had a lengthy webinar that Dr. Chamberlain and I were on, and after a lot of feedback from district leaders, the Department of Ed is pulling back on that, and we'll hear more from that hopefully soon, but I suspect it's probably not happening this year. So nonetheless, you'll be getting, as you typically do, paper reports mailed home to you, and those will go out Friday from the schools. They have to put them all in envelopes and seal them up and get them out to you. So what you'll see on those parent reports are achievement levels. So every, you know, on every test that a child takes, they are scored on that achievement level, not meeting expectations, partially meeting, meeting expectations or exceeding expectations, and there's the scores. And then students also in grades four through eight get a SGP number, that, and that compares them to students who are on a similar path, and it gives them that ranking. And we'll talk about that when we get into SGP in a moment.
Through the chair, Alan, middle school, I got mine in the mail today.
Oh, you did, okay, good, all right, I have this, all right. Good to hear. So first thing I'll talk about is achievement, and this is ELA. So this is ELA achievement compared, grades three through eight compared to the state. And so on the left-hand side is grades three through eight here in Auburn, and on the right-hand side is at the state level. So that first bar, the blue bar, is exceeding expectations. And then as we move left to right, the green bar is meeting expectations. The orange is partially meeting expectations, and then the red is not meeting expectations. So in this regard, you know, similar numbers, same number actually, in terms of percentage for exceeding expectations. And we have more in, in partially meeting, and then pleased with how we compare to the state level, those students not meeting expectations, certainly. Favorably compared to the state in that regard. The next slide is grade 10.
Can I just?
Yeah, please.
Just ask your question?
Yeah.
So would the red be the, the kids that opted out? They would be in there?
They would be in there, yep.
Okay.
Yep, if you got a zero or anywhere from zero to.
Or if you took 15 minutes on it.
Yeah.
Yes, I didn't do well.
Yeah.
To 469.
I'm just trying to, I want the data to be the good data, and I just want to know if there was a way that we can just go, well, they're over here, so that's okay. This is still, you know, there's still a lot of worth here, that our kids are doing fine, you know, we're meeting expectation, you know, we're still, you know.
Yeah, so that's some of the work that, that we still have to do yet, is doing a deep dive into some of this MCAS, and actually looking at student results and item analysis. And so we haven't gotten to that point yet, this was only, these were only, the data was only released on September 29th to, so. But yeah, that is definitely something we want to look at and say, you know, these are kids that could have, had they put forth the effort, not been in that category.
I think some of the schools, I know the middle school's doing some of that work on Friday, on the professional day, so some of them are already starting to look into that.
And through the chair, just a suggestion to you, Mr. Keller, but I know that I look at it from a different lens than like, for example, my husband. So my husband looked at it, he's like, ah, she didn't do as well, and I'm like, but I looked at it and I saw the growth percentile, and I'm like, what are you talking about? So maybe a little bit of education for parents to understand how to read them. You know, yes, there was a vote on question two, but I think that we need to still talk to parents and students about how important it is just to see how much they're growing. You know, that it might not matter for them to graduate, but it's still important to see like where they can improve. So I think a lot of parents who are not in the education system don't always know how to read the scores. And I know, I'm looking at, I'm looking at each question because I know how to read it. But my husband looks at it, he sees just a number, and he's like, oh, this number's lower than this number. But that's not necessarily the important part, the important part is the growth percentage, the growth percentile.
Absolutely, and I think that's a good, that's a really important point, and I have had conversations with people who thought that MCAS went away, right? And there's some, there's some misunderstanding about that as well, so, yeah, absolutely. So grade 10, ELA, you know, similar to the previous slide, you can see us compared to the state and how we performed. And then we'll look into mathematics, and this is grades three through eight achievement compared to the state. This is definitely, you know, some, begun to have some conversations about this, again, not meeting expectations, less than the state, which we're happy about. That partially meeting expectations is higher than the state, and we want to push those students over into exceeding and meeting. And you know that we've had a lot of professional development, new textbooks, and so we're hoping to see some changes as a result of some of that stuff. But definitely need to dig into this a little bit more and look more closely at item analysis. Grade 10 math. Similar to the state here. And then I'll, I'll look at science, and you heard me earlier say that there were declines in science pretty much throughout at the state level. That is, here, partially meeting expectations were higher than the state, which is great to see. We have significantly less students in that not meeting expectations than, than are at the state level. And there's grade 10. And please stop me if you have questions, because I don't want to go through too quickly, but also. Then this past year was the first year that there was a civics test for all of grade eight. And that is the last bar graph that I have in there for you, is how we compare to the state. And we were pleased to see how we compare to the state on both exceeding and meeting expectations.
The eighth grade teachers should be very proud of this. This is awesome.
I'm actually excited about this, I was just like, ah, all right.
This is a hard, it's a hard class to teach, and I'm telling you.
Absolutely.
Extremely proud of it.
Good for saying that. Absolutely.
And then the last thing I'm going to talk to you about is SGP. And so as a reminder, SG, what SGP is, is it's a degree to which a student's achievement has changed from the previous year. And so Ms. Rayfield was talking a little bit about that when she saw her child's reports. But ultimately, if a student gets a 1 to 39% on SGP, that's considered low growth. 40 to 59% is considered typical or moderate growth, and 60 to 99 is considered high growth. So what I did, sorry, you can't see that bottom row, but what I did here is, is color code these. So anything in green is where we were in that acceptable growth range, in that 40 to 59%. And then anything in, in red or pink is not, you know, outside of that range. So we have a couple of 39s, which are very close to that, but then we have a 36 and a 35. And then, you know, places where we're over 50 is, is something that I really want to note and acknowledge and have conversations about, like, what are we doing so well? And that's great to see, so we have a bunch of those.
Yeah, I was excited about that, I was like, ooh, we're going dark green, like, yeah, absolutely.
I like it. Great that the students with disabilities are improving so much.
Yes.
Fabulous.
And then just in terms of next steps, so I talked a little, a moment ago, or a couple of moments ago, about a new math curriculum. That is something that, you know, it's not something we say everything's going to get better because we have a new textbook, right? It's not, that's not the case, but we do feel very strongly in the visits we've made to the classroom and the investment we've made in professional development, and the conversations teachers are having in the classroom, that we will, our students will benefit from dialogue and thinking about math differently, and so that's a big piece of this. And Dr. Chamberlain mentioned professional development, so Thursday and tomorrow and Friday, we have ongoing professional development in both math as well as writing. We've invested heavily in our Empowering Writers Program at the K-8 level. And also, we've been working with, for our students with disabilities and other students on language-based strategies in grades three through eight. This year, the middle school is using iReady diagnostic for the first time. They piloted it last year in math, and they're using it this year in math and English. And then Mr. Longchamp and I are meeting with the English and Math Department head tomorrow, along with iReady, to begin using it at the high school level as well. So those give us windows into students and how they're progressing along with state standards, and also whether some of the things that they're, that they need intervention with or enrichment in. So those are some of the things we're doing, and we've had initial conversations with principals about the data. And again, as Dr. Chamberlain mentioned a moment ago, the next step is to be having those conversations with department leaders, with members of the department to really dig into this data and begin understanding what it's sharing, what it's saying to us beyond just this kind of superficial, high-level piece, so.
Through the chair, can I make a request?
You may.
So I have second grader, is there a YouTube so I can know how to fill in the blocks so that he can do the answer? Because there is a lot of frustration, and it's not just him, it's also his other friends. Because I know that eight plus four is 12, but I don't know how to fill out the boxes that they're supposed to do because there's 11 apples, okay? Because we just get a piece of paper like this, and it's, it doesn't show us like how to, to do it.
Just make a 10.
You're, you're, you're like, I know what that means, I don't know what that means. 1900ths, this is when I learned math, okay?
Yeah, so there are some parent resources, so let me have a conversation.
If there was something that could just be sent out, just so I can click a link and go, oh, yeah, that makes sense. Because he's yelling at me, make a 10, and I just go, okay, okay, make the 10. I don't know what that means.
Yeah, no, that's great feedback, I think that's, that, our.
10 is the friendliest of numbers. It is the friendliest of numbers, but they have. Always go to a 10. They have eight apples and four oranges, and how many do they have total? The answer is 12.
Yeah, 10 plus 2.
You have to make a 10, and I'm like, okay, well, I don't know, like, make the, like, borrow a couple. And he goes, that's not what you're supposed to do, I'm like, I don't know what to do. Just a little, just a little YouTube, just so I can go, oh, I know, I get that.
Yeah.
And there's been a few parents that have asked me that, and I was like, I mean, yeah, make a 10. And there's been a few parents that have asked me that, and I was like, "I mean, yeah, make a 10, make, make the 10s."
Yeah, yeah.
They're like, "I don't know what that means." I'm like, "I don't know either. That's what I'm supposed to say."
Yeah. So, I'm meeting with iReady folks. They're here for professional development tomorrow, and I know that they have resources. So, I will work on that with principals and with them.
I can't be the only one that, that looks at this and go. Like, if I had the whole book, but they only get, like, the page goes home for homework.
Yeah.
So, like, I don't get the pre.
Through the chair, do you find that hard at the middle school? I'm used to being able to log into big ideas and see it. I have no idea what my kids are doing in math now, so it's hard to help.
I gave up on it years ago.
Like, I can get to the answer, they're like, show your work, I'm like.
Yeah, but I don't know what they're doing.
I'm like, "Don't you make tick lines?" No. "Oh, okay, well, I don't, I don't know." All right, so we need resources for parents, then. Please. Okay, anything else you could?
Nothing from you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Keller.
You're welcome, thank you.
We'll move on to business and financial report.
Okay, I've provided you with a year-to-date budget report of the FY '26 school year dated September 23rd, 2025. We have reviewed last time. Your person, Harrington, you weren't with us. I had shared a quarterly report that I would like to move to. And they want us to wait for you to be here, if it is okay that whether or not you want to receive this each time or if everybody is, well, comfortable with me moving to my quarterly reports, as is Masbo and MASC best practices.
So, what do we think then? What do you guys?
I'm fine with it.
It was. Doing quarterly or? It was quarterly, but it was in, on one page, and it just was like, here is.
Very straightforward.
Right. So, I mean, this is good, like, this is line item by line item, and then it starts to jumble about page four, so.
Well, through the chair, I just, I thought it would be appropriate to wait until you got back.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, thank you. Yeah, I think quarterly is fine. But I do think at some point in the year, we should see a more detailed version, so.
I can, when I bring the quarterly report, I can also bring that year-to-date budget report along with the graphs and everything. That just gives you a better picture.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, I'd be fine with that. So, do we need to vote on that?
No, it was just for your review.
Okay.
Just your preference.
Okay.
No, it's not needed to vote. It's just information that I share with you each, each time.
So, we're all good with that, then, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. All right.
All right. The next thing you have is my FY '24. So, we talked about '27. So, this is the FY '24 audit report from Scannell and Associates for my end-of-year report, my very first one, along with the amendments that have been processed. This is for your information. Some of it is, might be a little confusing. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. But everything that the auditor had requested be done, in the end, you can see that all of those were submitted to the Department of Education and were completed. I will say, I'd like to just brag, and I think I did this with you before. When the auditor came, she had said she was nervous because I was a first-year business manager. And she said that I did have one of the best first-year reports. And it's very typical that you will have amendments every year, even my mentor, who has been doing it for many years, does. You're working with so many spreadsheets and so many numbers, sometimes you pick up the wrong column or, you know, there's an error in those things. But it was, I finished the FY '24 end-of-year, end-of-year report in August to now start the, the next one. So, it is a very long and lengthy process. Happy to answer any questions.
I will say, Beth and I had a pre-meeting before this meeting, and I said, "This audit, man, I'm surprised she doesn't want to quit." Like, this is so insulting or whatever. But then, she explained that everything was very minor. And yeah, you got tons of recognition from the woman that you did a great job, so.
Yeah, and anything, just for clarification, when it says results, procedure performed without exception, that means that wasn't an issue. So, everything here isn't an issue, right? It's just those things. And this is a very typical result, even for more experienced folks, to have a list of things that need to be fixed.
So, I'm glad you just said that because that was one of my hangups where I was like, "Well, it doesn't look like she fixed it." But it wasn't something to even be fixed.
Correct. So, that meant that they found no issues with any of those.
Yeah, all right.
Yes, when it's performed without exception, that's a good thing.
All right, good job.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Hard at work at the next one.
Yeah.
Then, for your information, again, through my mentor and through the Masbo program, just trying to ensure that I'm following best practice. So, like I share with you the revolving accounts. Today, I have shared with you a copy of the sub-account listing for all of the student activity accounts for the district for your information, just so you have an understanding of what we have for student activity accounts, as well as what the revenue source is for that and the anticipated expenses. And I am happy to answer any questions you have for that.
Do you have any questions?
And then, I also provided you with the athletic gift subaccounts that we have as well, just for your information, again, the revenue sources as well as any anticipated expenses that we may incur.
Any questions? Mrs. Scannell? Nope, no, seeing none, okay.
And then, the last thing I have is now for FY 2031, the capital improvement plan. So, Town Manager Vecchio has requested the submission of the capital improvement budgets for the FY 2031. I and Mr. Gregoire have met to discuss the future capital needs, and we formulated the FY 2031 budget. It's in your packet and will require your vote of approval in order to be sent over to the town tomorrow.
Okay.
There are a lot of things that have to be done very early on.
All righty. Any questions from anyone about that?
I just, I do have, I just had one, because I think, and I think it's me. I remember on one of these sheets, and I don't remember which one it was, you were talking about the turf fields needing to be fixed. Did we already do that? Or did that just fall? That, okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I remember it was on here, and then it was gone. And then, I went, "Does that mean we did it? Was it done?"
Yeah, so there's one of these sheets for every year. Even going back like to '22.
But there was something about, like, I remember the track, but then this one was this, the turf fields, both of them.
Yep.
And I remember it being on there.
We did some, we did some repairs to the turf fields this year. There was some, you're not really sure how they happen. I don't want to call them a tear, but almost like a slice, but they weren't sliced. But we had someone come in and make those repairs, so.
I just remember it was on here, like, just of like turf. It wasn't resurfacing, that wasn't the word. And then, the next one that I saw, but I don't know if it was the same one.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss it.
It's a lot to keep track of, especially when you're talking, you know, going backwards and forward, so.
Right, right, okay. All right, never mind.
And then, when things come up and we ask to repurpose it, maybe.
Yeah.
Because there are things we don't know are going to happen, like parking lots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm happy to answer any questions, any regards to that. And then, I would just make a motion.
That's it, that's all I.
Any more questions?
Nope.
All right, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the capital improvement budget for FY 2031 as presented by the business manager.
I'll second. Need all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.[1765.15]